And this is the regular business meeting of the West Bath Board of Selectment. It's Monday, January 8, 2018. We've already, we'll go right to the consent agenda. Do I hear?
I will go with the consent agenda.
And do I hear a second?
No, I second it.
And all any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as presented? And then pass it? The warrant and the school warrant, I guess, being passed around, I think. And the next regular meeting of the West Bath Board of Selectment is January 22, right here in the town hall, which is on Monday. Do anybody on the selectmen or Adam have selectmen's comments? No?
I have nothing to comment on.
Okay.
Yes.
Any citizens' comments? Any committee work group reports? We have the investment committee and they're here to make a recommendation to us for the next step in our investment program. I'll turn the floor over to the investment committee.
Okay, so we had a note, or I should say a CD matured at the end of December. And rather than try to cram it in in the middle of a holiday week, we had a meeting today and looked at our possibility for investment of that block. And it's $100,000. And our suggestions are, we would have normally done more than one suggestion for 18 months, but we don't have that many good opportunities to look at.
Fifteen months.
Or fifteen months, I should say, yeah. Fifteen months, there was only four, none of them good. So we looked at 18 months and slightly short of. So we have, our first choice is Wells Fargo for 18 months for 1.9% interest for the $100,000. Our second choice is also Wells Fargo, but for 13 months at 1.8% for the $100,000. So that's our recommendation. And then our next notes after that is April. So we'll be coming back to you in April. Continue our normal pattern of note matures, we give recommendations to reinvest unless we need a drawdown for a project for the town.
Okay, so your recommendation is, one more time?
Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo, 18 months for 1.9%. And Wells Fargo for 13 months for 1.8%.
Okay.
And both of those should be available, so if you vote on them today, Adam should be able to place them with our trust.
And they're each $100,000 or?
It's only one, we're only doing one note, I should say, one CD for $100,000.
Okay.
So our first choice is the 18 month. If that's not available, go to the second choice.
I get it, I get it. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, any?
Before you guys accept or reject it, there's some people in the room that maybe aren't following all this discussion. I know we have a new select person. Just to back up, we have something in the neighborhood of $550,000 of the town money that was left over from the lawsuit over RSU One overcharging the town some years ago for some period of time that we won, the selectmen spent, the town spent some of that lawsuit money. And then the most recent expenditure from the town, from this committee, was a significant portion of the new salt shed. I think it was $375,000 came out of this fund, went to the new salt shed, towards the new salt shed. So that left us with this $500 and some thousand dollars. And our philosophy as an investment committee recommending to the selectmen, we don't make any decisions for the town. The selectmen decide, we recommend. That we divide this up and have it spread over a period of maturity dates. So we will have in three months, another $100,000 that matures and we then will decide what to do with it. We could go to the stock market at any time if we chose to. It's not our inclination to do that in this uncertain times. Even though the stock market did wonderful things in the last year, it's very oversold, very high right now. We're trying to make sure that we preserve the capital for the town in the future. Because we know in five years or so, or four years to six years, somewhere in that time range, town's gonna have to buy a new fire truck. And the estimated price on that's maybe $600,000. It's our hope that this fund can really alleviate a lot of financing charges to the town when something like that comes. So we got one piece that's gonna mature at $100,000 in three months, another $100,000 in six months, another $100,000 in nine months. And then there's $150,000 that will mature in 12 months. So we were, our idea would be to do this for 15 months at this point in time, our recommendation. We looked at the choices, there were only five, none of them we liked. So we looked at 18 months instead of 15 months. So that's why we changed the schedule a little bit. And we had many to choose from, or a lot more to choose from in the 18 month and higher interest rates. So that's the sort of the big picture of what's going on with this whole thing. And you have that recommendation in front of you and I'll shut up.
Thank you very much.
Not for shutting up, thank you for the explanation.
Do we?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the investment committee and authorize Adam Garland to make the necessary arrangements for the removal of this CD.
Do I hear a second?
Are you saying that the first recommendation or?
The way that it has worked is that if the first recommendation is not available, then they go to the second.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions or discussions from the public, Steve?
Just a quick comment, just to let you know. If, when Adam goes tomorrow and neither one of those available, he'll let us know and we'll work with our trust broker to figure out what's available in the market. Like a week from now, the market will be completely different. We'll get the sheet, we'll look at it, we'll come up with a recommendation and then come back to you folks. And it may be a special meeting at your part, or we'll just wait until your next meeting to do it. But that's how it works. If it doesn't work out, we just go back to square one and look at what's available in time for the next meeting to select.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of adopting the investment plan as presented? And all opposed? Passes, Garland. Thank you very much for, you guys put a lot of work into this. We appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, let's see, what's next? Marijuana moratorium review. We just, well, language of the removal.
Yeah, all the board does, all the board needs to do is based on the public hearing that you guys just had, just decide whether or not we want to extend the moratorium as prepared by our attorney Sally Dyke. And if you do and you vote on it, then I have a document ready for you to sign.
Okay. The, yeah, hang on. We just completed, we just held a public, required public hearing, which is necessary to extend the moratorium or not. And now it's come forth for a vote. And do I hear a motion to adopt the moratorium as prepared and presented by town attorney Sally Dyke?
So.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor and all those opposed. Moratorium is passed and extended for another 180 days. Thank you. And next. Next on the list, Harbor and Waterway Committee discussion. I believe, I believe we have. Jim Mooney.
And me.
Okay, you, you?
And harbor master is here, Joe, that's our board cos. And another committee member, Peter Francisco.
Okay.
Well, we served with your pleasure certainly. And we understood that you may have a few questions. We're having a committee meeting Wednesday at 3:00, from 3:00 to 4:00, with a published agenda. And we understood that the select persons had some questions, some things they'd like us to consider. And so here we are.
Okay. Hang on just a minute.
Sure.
Okay, what, committee hasn't met in a while. What subject matter are you guys gonna tap or address?
Well, there's been quite a lot of discussion and meetings and so forth about the new oyster, LPA so-called. What do they, what's that stand for, limited production?
Surface.
Surface aquaculture, I guess. And there was a proposal in the New Meadows, for a aquatic area near an existing oyster pond. And there was a, not a public hearing, but a public meeting, a scoping session so-called at the fire station. I think you were there, Madeline. And there was a lot of opposition to it. And there was, the applicant, our future applicant spoke and described what he was going to do. And this is what the purpose of the scoping session is, as I understand it. And there was just a lot of public concern and so forth surrounding the project he was proposing. So there's been a number of people, I understand, that have expressed interest in being on the Waterways and Harvest Committee. And I think you've got a letter?
Yep, the selectmen have it in their package, it's a.
I haven't got a letter.
Steve Hinchman.
No, this is from, this is Adam, Adam Garland received a letter asking about being on the committee. This is from Steve Hinchman.
Yep.
Generally.
Yeah.
So, and we're planning to have a meeting Wednesday, just to discuss that. And I understand Adam's interested in some budget items also, you know, for the coming year. And we serve with your pleasure, so.
Yeah, well, I sort of got, personally, I sort of got a wisps of where you guys are coming from. I couldn't collect the story together until fortunately we sit down and talk.
Well, we maybe had a little prematurely because we really haven't had a following meeting yet. We're having it Wednesday. And we were actually.
I'm glad you told me, I didn't know.
Okay. I understood that you did know, Joe, I specifically asked the town if you'd been notified. So my apologies.
Well, I didn't know.
Okay, well, my apologies.
Okay.
So this was the same night and day we discussed when we met a couple weeks ago.
How does the Waterways and Harbors Committee fall into oyster fishery?
The state requires that the municipality provides input into the applicant's process, if you will.
You have a public hearing.
Uh, no, actually, the harbor master has to be consulted. If there's no harbor master, it's a municipal official. And that's been happening.
Yeah, the DMR talks to me. And the one that's in question, that they've had problems with, I was never, I was never involved in it. The next, I have others that I talked to the DMR today. And I've already inspected these sites and have had no problems at all with anyone in the area. And this person went through the channels properly. And that's primarily what the harbor master does. And perhaps the committee's gonna do the same thing or something of that nature. But I, you know, before anything is issued, I'm supposed to be notified.
Right.
And I'm supposed to go inspect the sites along with the person that needs the site. And this is basically what it amounts to. I was on the phone today with the DMR. And they wanted to know some information and I gave it to them and they're very satisfied. But I haven't, I haven't talked with Nelson Morath. He's the, he's the one that's the problem.
My, my concern about the, about the Harbor and Waterway Committee becoming involved in aquaculture is, other than the question of interference with navigation, we have, we have a very functional committee that deals with marine resources. And anything concerning aquaculture, it seems to me, would be in their bailiwick rather than the Harbors and Waterways Committee. That, that, any aquaculture thing having to do with shellfish should, it seems to me, go to that committee rather than this one.
Maybe I could speak to that a little bit. That very well may be true. The, my understanding is the marine resources deals with the flats and the tidal area. And the navigation and the aquaculture and the deeper water, where there's always water, that is dealt with by the waters and harbor, harbor's committee. So now these, some of these aquaculture licenses are both. I think, you know, Winter Point, is that the right name? They have, they have both. They have both that are floating crates and they have some on the flats. They used to. I went to a nice presentation one day, there's a tendency over here about that. So my, my take on it would be that the marine resources would deal with, you know, the tidal area. And the Water and Harvest Committee would deal with the tidal area. You know, that's where there's always water.
But the state of Maine has jurisdiction over water, over the areas where the water always is.
Yes, they do.
The town doesn't have any jurisdiction at all.
Well, the state of Maine, according to their own rules, requires a sign-off from the town through the harbor master.
Yeah, I generally sign it off if, if I know that it's not going to be a problem. And the people that apply for a permit, they have to go and talk to a budding people. The people that live near the, near the area or, in this case, we had Boden College and you had to go talk to Boden College. And anyone else that could be affected by it. And if it's okay, then I sign it off.
Right.
And that's kind of what I do along with my other jobs.
The Harbors and Waterways Committee or?
Yeah. Committee.
In a description of, essentially a job description from June 2004, and amended on June 14, 2006. Purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a waterways and a harbors ordinance committee to provide for the adjustment orderly operation of marine activities on West Bath Waterways. It is intended to promote safety, enjoyment, convenience, effective use and control of mooring areas and facilities pertinent there too.
Well, navigation is the issue, you know, with these, with these aquaculture sites. And that's the biggest issue that I heard at the scoping session so-called, was that there was potential for this new licensee to have quite a lot of conflict with, you know, these floating crates and so forth. There was all kinds of talk about mooring fields and sailboats passing through and not being able to maneuver and all of those things. And that thing, in my, in my estimation, but I mean, we serve with your pleasure, so it's whatever you'd like us to be, I guess. You know, that would, that comes under the purview of the Waterways and Harvest Committee.
Right now, the way it stands, the harbor master, not the committee, has to certify and okay a new lease site.
Right. I'm the one that gets the paperwork with the DMR. And I talk to them and then I go out and look at the site along with the person applying for it.
But that's the way it's been for a long time.
Yeah, we have done it for a long time.
No, that means you okay that site easy though.
Right.
But the Coast Guard is also involved as far as navigation goes, in the channel, in the right ways. They also oversee these permits, so I'm not sure.
Part of, excuse me, if I may interject right at that point.
Sure.
Out of the process for the applicant, the aquaculture applicant, is to get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Correct. Also, the Coast Guard's involved.
And DMR.
I wasn't aware the Coast Guard was involved.
The Coast Guard is involved, but they certainly were an outside.
Because of a channel, the navigation piece.
Navigation.
I mean, EPA is involved as well. Everybody's involved.
So I'm not sure, I'm just wondering why your committee wanted to take on this aspect.
Well, I'm not sure we do. There's just been a lot of, there's been a lot of public input from the citizens of West Bath. And there's a lot of people that are concerned about it.
Right.
And I guess I, I'm one of those. You know, this is a wonderful resource we have, this man of the river.
As members of the public, you're more than welcome, you're encouraged to take part in, you know, these public kind of things. But to do so under the umbrella of being a committee who represents, is standing in on behalf of the selectmen, who represent the rest of the town, that's.
See, a lot of the problems we've had, excuse me, were people that live along the shore, where this one in particular is, don't want to look at it. And that's, that's the reason, even as, they don't want to look at it. They don't want to.
Well, it's more than that though, Joe, because, you know, there used to be between my place and Linda Henderson's little cove up there, there used to be maybe three or four boats moored. Now, there's maybe 11. Some of them are huge.
Yeah. That is a problem.
And, and so now that, that little channel there is constricted down to very little. And, you know, that, that one boat came up there one day last summer and I, I was by the shore with my skiff. His weight picked up the skiff and dumped it six feet up into the rocks. And, and so we, we do have potentially a problem there. And I think, I might, I might just say, this, this is going to probably become more and more involved for the town because right now, somewhere over east, I've forgotten where, they've gotten funding for a co-op to do seaweed aquaculture. And they, they have been in discussion with McCormick Spices.
Yeah.
Something like that. And they want to buy seaweed. And they won't buy wild seaweed, they'll only buy cultured seaweed. And there isn't enough seaweed being grown in aquaculture farms in the state of Maine to meet their minimum. So that's one of the reasons why this co-op is formed in order to ratchet that up. Another thing that's happening is that they've got equipment that they've brought over from Japan now to facilitate growing scallops. And which, again, none of these things may work out or they may become very big. The third thing that I'm aware of that they're, that they're working on with Carter Knowles, got a grant.
How does this, how does this affect the town in any way?
Because you're going to be getting more and more applications for aquaculture, which are going to inevitably, as, as the case is over here, they're going to conflict with people's moorings, their means of navigation to and from their, their, their moorings. And just their use of that part of the, of the river. I mean, if, if, if that marage thing had been improved, it would be impossible for somebody at low tide to take their sailboat from, and there's a couple of them up there. They couldn't tack out of there, there wouldn't be enough rum for them to do it. So that greatly inhibits their ability to navigate. So I think we're going to see a growing number of these kinds of conflicts if, if in fact this, this small scale muscle culture comes about, if the scallop comes about, if the seaweed comes about. These are, are three different aquaculture things beyond the, the existing oyster leases that, that are out there now.
My understanding is that DMR, the Coast Guard, the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers have very strict guidelines as to when an aquaculture permit is granted.
That's true, Madeline, of the standard lease and the, and the experimental lease. But the, but then the towns have a lot more control. And one of the reasons why DMR created the LPAs was to be able to pass off some of the involvement on these LPAs. An LPA is only 400 square feet.
Right.
But a person can have four of them. And you can have another family member with another four, your neighbor with another four, and pretty soon it's, and, you know, it starts becoming a problem. You know, now it's easy for, I think, in a case where you have someone with one LPA, one of those applications, I'm acquainted with the man. I think that's all he, he wants for this foreseeable future is one LPA.
George St. John is the one.
Yeah, and he's, that's not really that much of a problem. But when you start scaling this up, then it starts becoming a potential problem with existing people who, you know, have cottages or live there year-round. And I think that, you know, at least some greater and in-depth discussion is probably needed on, particularly on the larger scale projects. Which I'd say, you know, when you have 12 LPAs strung out along there, that, that starts becoming itself really.
But wouldn't we allow that?
Well, I think we do, we might some places.
If I say no, then the DMR will have, they'll have to do something about it.
You would say no on the basis of what the legal?
It's crowded the area.
The legal?
Right.
The regulations require so much room for navigation.
Right, yeah.
Because nothing.
Right now, the one that's being complained about is the one that, it has limited navigation, but you could still get through there. I'm a fisherman, I'm back and forth to help every day. But if it got any worse, it would be a problem. And if I can help it, it won't get any worse.
Right.
But that's up to the committee, if they want to have a committee.
Well, that, that, the question of navigation seems to be appropriate for the Harbor and Waterway Committee. Regulation of aquaculture seems to be an overreach, which is not to say that we wouldn't encourage any citizen of the towns, or a butter of a proposal to attend all the hearings. Those, they have those for a reason.
If someone applies for it, the DMR gets a hall meeting, and if I say no, then it probably will be no. And I have to give them a reason, obviously.
Right, and it can't be just because the person's been unpleasant. It has to be.
I don't like him, and it's, you know, that's obvious.
Just out of curiosity, this meeting, when?
Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday, like there tomorrow? Has public notice been given?
It's posted on the website.
It is? Okay. And is it posted as a West Bath committee?
Committee meeting, yep.
Let me add, if I may, we're not attempting to regulate aquaculture. That's, that's not, I don't, that's never been brought up. We're not attempting to do that at all. Our concern is that, you know, navigation primarily. And, you know, I mean, I've looked at, I've just opened up our charge here, and the purpose of the committee is to provide for the just and orderly operation of marine activities on West Bath Waterways. I mean, to me, that, that falls under the waterhouse committee. It's intended to promote safety, enjoyment, convenience, effective use, and control of mooring areas and public facilities pertinent there too. So, but we serve your pleasure, so it's really, it's what you would like as selectman. I mean, we're appointed by you, Joe's appointed by you. We can, we can be fired by you, I suppose we could say. So it's what you would like us to do. There's been a lot of public concern. I, for one, would like to see more notice to people in the surrounding area. You know, I know some of that's been done, but I think that some people have been surprised by it.
What notice about what?
About proposed oyster farming. In front of their house or in front of?
By the, by the state's rules, they have.
Right, all they have others have to be.
They have to avoid.
I think I know for one right now, one person that has no idea what's happening.
They are now, but they didn't before.
Okay.
So is that, is that the fault of the applicant, the failure to notify?
I don't know.
I mean, there is a, there is a process to do this.
Right.
Yes. Well, I know, I missed one last summer, there were a couple people that didn't get notified and...
Well, they should void the applicant.
You know, but, well, I know, but, you know, that's why I should. But I think, you know, I, my thinking was potentially that the committee could discuss these things, because it has no power for anything now, but it can discuss some of these issues and discuss it, bring together some of the various, what do you say, stakeholders in the river, people that use it recreationally, people that, the lobster people, that are co-hogging out there all the time. And a lot of these things weren't taken into consideration at all at that time.
For the LPA? They weren't taken into consideration for the LPA?
Well, it wasn't for the, no, it wasn't taken into consideration for the LPA.
He's seeking a permit.
I, I met right here with, with DMR and that person last spring, and they had no clue that anybody was co-hogging there, and yet they were, they were out there all winter last year, except, I don't know, I think we froze up a little bit for a few minutes. They won't be doing it this year.
No, but there are people who are, who are normally co-hogging on the middle ground where he wants to be.
Well, I think now he's, he's proposed to move out away from the middle grounds somewhat. So he may be in deeper water than what they can reach. I don't know, how, how deep can they go with those bowwrecks?
I hope they're as strong you are. I'd say ten feet, but.
About ten is about maximum.
Yeah, he, he may be beyond that mallow.
I haven't seen any.
I don't know that he cares.
Bowwrecks.
That's true.
Pretty rare.
But DMR should, DMR will, will be concerned about whether or not that lease site conflicts with an already existing fishery. That's one of the disadvantages.
I, I think, I think you're right, and I think you're right in theory on that. On the other hand, DMR is pushing hard. You know, if they could see a thousand oyster leases on the coast, they'd be happy. I mean, they're pushing aquaculture hard, and perhaps with some good reason, but I think that they're, I think that they're ignoring some of the other considerations in favor of trying to increase the number of leases.
I think they probably would be really careful about that, because that's a, that's an immediate lawsuit, and they know it.
I, I'm sorry, Madeline, I don't hear very well.
If they, if they ignore their own regulations, that's an immediate lawsuit, and they know it.
And they're being sued now. And, and in fact, I'm trying to think, I'm racking my brain right now, but there was another, there's another situation somewhere along the coast here where they have a potential, a potential problem that, I don't know, I think.
Is that the Baguette's?
Round Castaneda.
No, that's another one. That's been, that's been ongoing. I think there, this was a new place.
But the middle ground is, is the biggest concern right now.
Right.
And I don't know if they're going to reissue a permit to him, or, you know, I haven't been contacted, and if I do, I'd recommend that he moves, but that's, that's only me.
Well, that's what I told him after the, after the scoping session on, in August, that it was pretty clear that.
Yeah.
He was not in a good location.
No, and he wasn't, he wasn't, wasn't real friendly with the neighbors.
There were some, there were some social issues.
Well, all right.
So, we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday, right?
Right, that's the plan right now.
Okay.
Unless we're dissolved tonight.
I don't think we're prepared to do that.
A side question entirely different topic, but are you, are you full committee members now? You're full?
These three right here.
This is it now.
So Bruce is no longer there, right?
No.
He does not wish to be involved anymore.
I've called him many times and never got any.
Maybe I should say, he's not able to be involved anymore.
I, I talked to him about, two months ago, and he, he asked me to let, I guess, I don't know, he asked me to, to let Adam know that he did not want to do it anymore.
Okay.
And I think I forwarded it through, I don't know, Jim or Joe, somebody.
Yep.
Or maybe both.
What role do you see this committee playing in this upcoming meeting?
Well, there's been, it depends on who's at the meeting, of course. Steve Hinchman has expressed some interest. I'm not sure if you're going to act on that tonight. Are you going to act on his request to be on the committee?
I do have that included in your stuff.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
We can't act on it, we can talk about it though.
But Adam seemed to be interested in some budget items, and we were going to discuss.
I didn't understand the budget part of it.
The, the budget piece, I forwarded you the budget information, so that if the committee wanted to weigh in on some of the budget pieces, they're welcome to. Joe, as the harbor master, provides me with budget information every year and what he needs. If the committee wanted to be a part of that conversation, then they could. But the Harbor Waterway budget is quite simple, so. I think one of the things that where we're at is, with the Board of Selectmen, is that the harbor master and the committee is seeing who you want to do, what, and how. So, I mean, traditionally, the harbor master has been the one that's taken care of everything the last handful of years. So maybe when we leave the room, we can walk out with a clearer defined roles.
Yeah.
And, and it seems like the way the state has got this structured, that Joe is the, is the lynchpin between Harbor and Waterway and Marine Resources in terms of approval rate at the moment.
Right.
Well, they're the one that contacts me.
Yeah.
Because I am the harbor master, and that's kind of a thing they do with all the harbor masters along the coast.
Right.
If there's going to be anything you do with aquaculture, they...
Are you on the Marine Resources Committee too?
No.
Would, but you are a part of the Harbors and Waterways.
Well, I have been drafted.
Drafted. Would, would it be helpful, would it be helpful to you, if you had it, what, from a committee who is essentially?
Well, we've got, we've got a fellow here that wants to run it. He wants to be the head of the meeting, and I'll just be the harbor master, that's all. That's all I want to do, is be the harbor master. Where I'm on the water all the time, that's kind of my thing.
We don't need to take any action.
Right, Joe?
Well, I'm not sure if you've characterized that correctly, quite correctly, but that's fine.
My, about a year and a half ago, I appointed myself as the, as the liaison between the board and the Marine Resources Committee. And I'll, unless you and Kathy have desires to do that, I will do that. Well, I missed the last meeting, they, they were there for five minutes, and I was pinned and asleep.
The L T J.
But I'll be here at three on Wednesday. See what, see what we do. So we can continue the discussion and figure where we want to go from here, and what, what they might, what the purview should appropriately be if we want to continue the committee.
Yeah, we need to keep in mind, especially, especially if the committee's going to play any role in this committee representative, selectmen who represent the town, is not only do, not only do people who are opposed to furthering aquaculture have certain rights, but those same people who are furthering the aquaculture have rights as well. Protected, that's why, that's why earlier it's very sensitive, I think, what role the town plays, if any, in this. I don't have a lot of information to make any decision tonight. I'd like to have more information, are we, have we got a committee and we're looking for a crisis for it to resolve? Or do we have a crisis and we need a committee for it to take a look at something?
Well, I mean, I think we saw by last August in that meeting how passionate people were about what was happening on the river.
Passion, passion's one thing, but can anything be done about it? It's a whole nother ballgame.
Well, I guess it would be yet to be seen partially, but we do have, the town does have input through the harbor master. And so there is an opportunity to provide input to DMR. And the New Meadows, to me, is just such a battle resource. We, you know, I heard it from many people, that they're just concerned about this pristine river and what's going to happen with that aquaculture. And they see twelve of these LPAs all of a sudden along the middle, the middle ground, and then they see this proposal for five point six acres out there. And so it's, you know, it just was a lot of concern that expressed. And, and I'm not, I don't face the middle ground, I'm not over there. I have no, I mean, I've been on the New Meadows all my life so far, and I, I love it and all of that, but this isn't my, if you want to call it a battle, it isn't my kill the die for kind of thing. I mean, if, if at any time this selectman wished me to step back, I'm happy to do that.
No, we're not sure we're not going to let you go.
I'll give you that letter of resignation immediately.
No, we're not going to.
If that's what you'd like.
What I'm, what I'm thinking, and ladies, please hear me out, let me know what you think. We have a committee. It's everybody's up to date, and it's a real committee. If we could task the committee for the time being with essentially a fat-finding mission and report back to us with some plausible scenario of what's going on, is there a problem, if so, is it, you know?
Sure.
Maybe some recommendations, a take the pulse of the public sentiment, that sort of thing. We need, we need more information, I think, at this point, before we make any sort of decisions.
Sort of before we make any major changes in the, in the structure of the committees.
And would you be representing the town of West Bath?
Yeah, would be.
Do you have any authority?
No.
Any more authority than you normally would have.
Right. The, the committee, as I understand it, is set up as five, five positions with two alternates.
Yeah.
And with just the three of us right now.
Yeah, and then you got a corps, so you're good to go.
Really?
What about you? I don't live in town, sorry, Joe.
And then go to the committee, take the temperature of the public, see what's going on, see if you can gain any information, and get back to us, and we'll, we'll work with you.
Sure, we'll make, we'll meet and then, because you're going to be there, that's great.
Absolutely.
And...
Sure. You know, normally, normally we have a crisis, and then we appoint a committee to go aggressive and give them marching orders, and...
Yeah.
But we, we're not getting the picture yet. I'm sure there's a picture out there, we just don't see it.
Well, I think primarily it was the concern over the aquaculture expansion so fast, so much, so quick.
Yeah.
I think that's the primary thing, and how it affects people's other uses of the river.
Has, has either of these concerns to DMR?
Oh, yes, about eighty people did.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
At the scoping session. But, you know, it was really interesting that there, they seemed really unfazed by it, that this was all still going to happen after all this public input, that this lease out here, this huge lease was going to happen still. That was the feeling I got from the meeting, but maybe I was, I mean, off base. It was really kind of like, we're going down this road, and we're going to keep going, and...
Well, the road, the road is rocky. I mean, there...
The road is rocky.
The road is a little rocky.
Yeah.
Because, because there are so many things that have to be met. And if, if there's any one thing that is not right, then the lease has to be refused. So, so that was, that was an informational session, really.
Oh, yes, it was, it was, it sort of was. Scoping sessions so-called.
Clearly, the, the potential lease was very vehemently opposed by a number of people. The people, the people from DMR heard that, and I believe Mr. Maras also heard that. Whether or not that results in any change, I don't, on his part.
Yeah, public outrage in itself won't necessarily derail something like that.
No, but not meeting the regulations does derail it.
Absolutely.
Well, I believe that a lot of people complaining about it might have an issue with the DMR. According to, I've talked with them, according to them, it does give them a little, if they don't want it there, I mean, I can tell them, I don't want it there because it has a navigation, and that would certainly help the people that live there.
Have they asked you for your opinion yet?
Yeah, maybe.
Have they asked you for your opinion on this lease site?
Yeah. Yeah, they did, I went to that meeting, they did.
Well, let's do that for the time, Ian.
Sure.
And, um, then, I don't know, you guys go, go to this meeting, maybe talk to some people, and then meet, and then come back and talk to us.
It'd be really, it'd be really good if we, if there are other people that are interested in being on the committee, if, you know, if they are included, that would be really good. We could include them, so, cause as far as I'm concerned, the more input, the better, yeah, everybody.
I think we're not in a position to, um, to appoint Mr. Hinchman, uh, tonight, but it's a public meeting, so of course he would be eligible to come.
Okay.
I mean, anybody would come.
Anybody would come.
If they're a resident of the town, or if they're from the newspaper, or if they're just wandering off the street looking for a warm place, it's a public meeting.
We'll address this, uh, next meeting.
Would the board like to maybe set a date when to meet again to see their findings, so we make sure it happens in the near future?
Well, we, we meet again, uh, what, on the 20th, what do they say?
22nd, I believe.
Yeah, um, if you, you guys think that, um, do we have anything in two weeks for us?
I am, uh, so far, only the chairman pro tem, I guess is the right term, so, uh, I may not be actually the chairman, we'll have to see. I've heard some extensions, but we'll see how the committee votes on Wednesday.
There, there's a hearing on the 22nd, there is a hearing in Yarmouth on LPAs.
Oh, right.
That DMR is holding.
What time?
Uh, and, and that's at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
And, uh, so that might not be possible to.
So perhaps we could move it ahead two weeks.
That's fine.
To the, that's the next regular meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you have to get on the agenda, and it's better if you are on the agenda, but it's not the end of the world if you're not. Uh, but if you're not on the agenda, you have something that you might want us to act upon, we may not be able to act upon it, uh, because it's not on.
So, what's the name of that meeting?
February 12th.
Alright, cause I would like to go to that, uh, meeting in, uh.
Okay.
In Yarmouth also, so.
And then by the, by the time you meet with us two weeks after that, you have a, you'll have a lot more bigger picture, better picture.
Sure.
Go down.
Hopefully.
So we're planning on being here February 12th.
So, the Wednesday meeting is?
No, we're still gonna meet, Joe.
Okay.
We're gonna meet at 3, just as we had talked about.
3 o'clock.
Right here, just as we talked two weeks ago.
I'm glad I found that.
Okay, well, you were right here, Joe, two weeks ago, we talked about.
I wasn't aware, I knew it was this one, but I wasn't aware of it, Wednesday also.
Does the board of selectmen wanna have, um, the appointment papers for the next meeting, the other gentleman, or?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, if somebody wants to serve on a committee, I'm not gonna encourage them.
Oh, we'll have it for you.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you very much.
Okay.
For, for your, your service and your, your future service and your interest, it means a lot. In order for us to have all the answers, we need feedback, and you've.
Well, I think public input's great, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Okay, let's, where is my thing here? 2018 town office holiday schedule. Which is in the back.
So the, the holidays that are listed in here are, pretty much mirror the states' holidays, a handful of them, I think there's a couple of additional ones, though. Do you remember what they are, is it the, uh?
Well, we typically close half day at the fiscal, the end of the fiscal year, so we can.
Right.
Prepare the paperwork, uh, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is typically a half day, where we get to the bank early because they're closed and busy.
Right.
Of course, before the long holiday. We don't typically close Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, but historically, many of the state offices are closed, so reasons to stay in that.
I can understand closing Christmas Eve, or half a day anyway, New Year's Eve, I don't seem to even need to close that day, like, that's just me.
I agree with you. Um, I'm, I'm going to take the position that it's a very inexpensive way to give people a reward for hard work, to give them an extra holiday. Because the end of the fiscal year, the office may be closed, but that's not a holiday.
Right, the, the end of the fiscal year, the office may close at noon, but that does not mean that the treasurer and the clerk are leaving at noon. They just need that time in order to tidy up.
Exactly. Right. And they, um, the Thursday, Friday closing for Thanksgiving mirrors what happens for the school, um, our, our other employees, and, um.
I should have gone to public service, I really should have.
Yeah, I really don't think closing New Year's Eve, I think that it's hard enough to get down here to register cars and pay taxes, and this is more, the state gets 14, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, so it is a little bit different.
Couple of them are just early closings for, for costs, so.
Not, not, not holidays at all, um. Well, in view of the fact that it is the last day of the year, then I, I'd be willing to say, all right, let's, let's make it work on the 31st. Don't hold up for the, for two days of the Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I think with all the rest of them, I just think that's an excessive, so.
Uh, December 31st. Yeah, I can, yeah.
So, so we'd be adopting the schedule as presented, with the exception of, uh, December 31st would remain a workday.
Is that a motion?
I think that's a motion.
Okay, that's a motion, do I hear a second?
I'm second.
Okay, discussion, um, I would entertain that Monday being a, like a number one, a clock, close.
You're talking about Christmas Eve?
Uh, no, New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve.
Cause, uh, well, you gotta get a little of the Christmas. No, I, I would entertain a short day, but I prefer to see it open at some point at that day.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah, I like a short day. You like a short day?
I'm certainly not gonna argue if the board wants to give the employees a short day.
How do you feel about that?
I'm fine with them being open that whole time, I don't think they need a short day.
Oh, one more, say that one more time.
I think that they need to be open the last day of the year.
Okay. Okay, so we have, uh, discussion, we have a short day, and then we have a full day. We have a discussion.
Well, that, that would be, that would be an amendment to the motion.
I'm not quite sure how to present it at this point, probably go through the first one and then propose the second one.
Yep.
You need to put it in there first.
So are we?
If there's a second.
So are we, are we looking to approve this holiday schedule as written, with the exception of removing Monday, December 31st?
That was the first motion.
And then you're looking to amend the motion, would you, you haven't voted on the motion, so why wouldn't you just, you could vote to defeat it, and then you could make a new motion based on your new recommendation. It'll probably be the easiest way.
Okay. Alright, the motion on the floor right now is.
Yeah, the, the motion on the floor is to, is to have, is to accept the schedule as presented, with the exception of Monday, December 31st as a complete workday.
Okay.
Is that true? Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, and all those opposed, that one is defeated, and we have a.
So then the second motion would be that we accept the schedule as proposed, with the exceptions of Monday, December 31st, 2018, being a shorter workday with the office closure at 2.
Okay, and a second. I said. Alright, so that is a short day, essentially, right? And all those in favor, and all those opposed, that's passed.
So currently, you got half a vote.
Just have it a know.
So they're closing in 14th, October 2.
No, 14th, sorry.
14th.
14th.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any, um, any other business?
Just our executive session, then let our.
Okay, we do have an executive session scheduled, uh, by a motion for it. Uh, request to enter into an executive session, similar to Title 1, Chapter 13, Dash 405, Part 6A of the MRSA, discussing personnel issues. All in paid, all in. We are in executive session, uh, Act 41.